Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Just a reminder to silence your cell phones. Tyler has listening devices if needed. And if you plan to speak this morning for public comment, there is a sign in sheet over in the corner. If you would just go ahead and sign in and give your address, then you don't have to give your address publicly. All right. So we have a couple of routine items, a couple of amendments to the agenda. So first item, I'd consider a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove five abatements for denial for parcel 29518.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Then I would consider a motion to amend the agenda by removing item 15 to consider a motion to authorize Minnehaha County as a subrecipient of the South Dakota Attorney General's application for OVW fiscal year 2023 grants to improve the criminal justice response.
Move for approval.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now with those amendments, I would consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Now that takes us to the consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to regular business. First item is a MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge sustaining grant briefing by Judge Robin Hellman. Thank you for being with us this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robin Hellman, presiding judge for Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. I'm here today to give you an overview of the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge. Second, two-year, it would be our third two-year grant. Just as a brief overview from prior years, the first four years of the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, we looked at a number of things in our community. The original goal of the Safety and Justice Challenge was to safely reduce our jail population. And over the course of the first four years, also to look at racial and ethnic disparities. And there are a couple of very important programs that we implemented during those first four years of the Safety and Justice Challenge. One of those first items was the pretrial program that we have now that's housed in the sheriff's office at the Minnehaha County Jail. That implemented a pretrial safety assessment, and now we're able to monitor people pretrial as opposed to having them remain in the jail. They're able to go out into the community, to be checking in with the pretrial staff, and to hopefully not commit new crimes, and to make all of their court dates. We also established something called the in custody review team, which is a team that meets every two weeks to review people who have been in custody in the Minnehaha County Jail for at least two weeks, who might be safely released into the community if there is a provision of services. And so that team is something that grew out of the MacArthur Foundation those first four years. We've also emphasized on community engagement. We've placed trainings in the community to help people understand some of the various ethnicities in our community. We've also had neighborhood events throughout the community. Last summer, we had four neighborhood events. The funding has also provided some evaluation for the link. We've also had three cohorts that were done those first four years of the Leaders of Tomorrow Program. And then that funding has also provided some services to Urban Indian Health. The next two years, the idea of the grant is to find what we've been doing and try and make that sustainable. Are there things that we've been doing in our community that come through this funding that we want to continue once we no longer have the MacArthur Foundation funds? And so this next two years, we're really trying to decide what have we been doing that we want to sustain in the future. One of the major programs that we think will be coming out of this is a program through Urban Indian Health called WOOCIE, and that is a program that is very similar to a program in Rapid City. And the program is similar to a mobile crisis unit that will be staffed by community health workers and other professionals who are trauma informed. And the goal there is to reduce the need for individuals and relatives in crisis to interact with law enforcement and to deescalate situations in our community. So one of the big plans that we have over the next two years, if this grant funding is accepted by the commission, is to stand up that program here in our community. We're also endeavoring to analyze the pretrial services program that we have, as well as the in custody review team, and determine what of those programs can we sustain in the future, what is working and what can be amended and enhanced there. We're also planning some community engagement programs. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity last summer to attend those community functions, but this year we have four more neighborhood events planned for Granite Valley Park on July 6th, Meldrum Park on July 20th, Emerson Park on August 1st, and Hayward Park on August 17th. So those are ways that we can connect with our community and bring people together. So those are some of the programs that we would like to highlight for the next two years of this sustainability grant. And I know that the contracts are not here for the commission to sign today, but I know they will be very shortly. And I would encourage the commission to sign that grant funding contract to allow us to continue this work. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Judge Hellman? Doesn't look like it. So thank you so much for taking the time to be with us this morning.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us on to item 11, which is a briefing on the County Board of Mental Illness Activities. We have co-chairs Erin Johnson and Tom Weirheim. Good morning.
It's that time of year where we present our budgets and we are putting ours together. And hi, I'm Tom Weirheim. This is Erin Johnson, co-chairs of the Board of Mental Illness. Our primary concern every year is just the number of holds we have and the increases that we see. We always say that we'll probably never have fewer holds the next year than we had the previous year, and that's held true since she and I took over. We usually see about an eight to 10% increase every year, and that's kind of the numbers you see here in front of you. March is always our busiest month. We saw 200 holds this past March. Typically, we see about 160 to 180. So it was a busy month for us. What we don't have, we are not tracking, and we need to start as we've seen the severity of holds increase. We've seen more people with more serious attempts, more, they just need more time at behavioral health before they're in good enough shape to be released. And so we're going, we're going to contact IT and see if we can, we keep a database of all the holds we have, but just to kind of see, all right, how long are we having individuals on a hold? What's, what's the length of time that each person is on one? Just because we're starting to see the workload increase for qualified mental health professionals. We had one last Saturday who saw over 30 holds between the two counties. And at half an hour a hold, at best, that's a 15-hour day, doesn't count the drive time. You know, when we have somebody on a hold, they could be anywhere. They could be at behavioral health, they could be at either the hospitals, they could be at the VA, they could be at the jail, they could be at JDC. And so you throw that into the mix, and it makes for a very long day. And so we're likely to have to have another qualified mental health professional on call for those days. And so we're looking into that as well. But what we need to do is we need to track the length of time because the list gets longer until that individual has a hearing. And so that's what we're looking to do here in the future. And then the other thing we're working with is Lincoln County has a program called Kite Works that they use to track, track some holds in the paperwork, and I'll let Erin speak a little bit more about that.
We've been trying to make things more efficient since we started, and one of the things that we wanted to do was to get everything online and so that people, the people that needed to access it could access it. And in Lincoln County, since 2017, they, between 2017, 2001, they used a program called File Vista. Three board co-chairs over there, and I'm one of them over there, we are able to access all of the paperwork for every individual that's been on a hold since 2017. In Minnehaha County, we have somebody over at Human Services that scans in our paperwork and then gives us a flash drive at the end of the year. And so we keep our own records, but that's the only way that we can get that paperwork is through her or through us. In Lincoln County, it just made it more efficient because each co-chair takes a week, and then we switch over to a new co-chair. So everybody can access that paperwork. And they've switched over now to Kite Works, which is more secure, and we've been working with IT in Lincoln County to do that. So Tom and I are looking at switching to that program so that all five of us, who are co-chairs in both counties, can access paperwork for the joint board, because we're a joint board. And for so long, we functioned as really two separate boards because Lincoln County and Minnehaha County functioned quite separately and differently. And so I think that since we started, we've, we've kind of helped to bring the two together and function more as a joint board, and this would, this would help us to function even better and more efficiently.
What's the name of that program?
Kite Works.
Kite, K-I-T?
Yes. Yep. And Jake down at Lincoln County IT has been very helpful. He got us up and going for Lincoln County, and he has set it up so that Minnehaha County could also join at whatever point we determine that we want to do that.
Have you been, have you worked with anybody on the Minnehaha County side to work through the legal HIPAA kinds of issues that there is?
We haven't in detail. I think we've just mentioned it to them briefly, but Jake did say that he would contact them and go through some of that if, if we need to, them to be part of that conversation.
Well, I think before we would be willing to move forward with any proposal on Kite Works or some similar system, we're going to need to have confidence that it, that we're covered legally, that we're doing the things that we need to do from HIPAA and other, you know, protected health information status. So, so I would suggest that you can, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that's just an IT question. That's probably a state's attorney question as well.
We can talk to them, too.
Other questions?
If I may.
Yes. Mr. Karski.
What, what does a mental health hold cost, Minnehaha County per hold? Have you broken that down? Do you know that number?
It depends on the length of the stay.
Okay.
It depends, there are many different factors. It depends on if the hold starts here. Our time is typically probably about a half an hour, a little bit more if, if we just have the person for one day. If we have the person for multiple days, the QMHP is required to see them on the first day, and then each day thereafter. So the visit by the QMHP won't be very long, but the QMHP is required to report to us then. And that law, I believe that was 2021.
It's two years ago, yeah.
That it went into effect, requiring the QMHP to visit the patient each day, and then they're supposed to report to us. So then that increases the cost. The contract between Behavioral Health and HSC cuts down on some of the medical cost for that because there's a contract that says if the person doesn't have insurance, if we can get them cleared by HSC, then we can pay, Minnehaha would just pay them the HSC rate, which is-
The monthly contract rate.
$600 per month instead of, I believe it's 700 and something-
A day.
-per day at Avera. So there are ways to cut down on that cost, and, and we do that, but I don't have an exact number for you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Is there anyone here for public comment on this particular topic? All right. Well, thank you both very much for your work.
Thank you.
It's very difficult work, and we really appreciate what you guys do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 12, which is a public hearing to consider 14 special event on sale liquor license applications for Red Rock Bar and Grill at Houston Speedway race events between May 23rd, May 2023 and September 2023. Kim, good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Kim Christensen with the Auditor's Office. The Auditor's Office has received 14 applications for special event on sale liquor licenses for Red Rock Bar and Grill. The applications are specific to race events taking place from May to September at Houston Speedway located in Brandon. The special event licenses would allow Red Rock Bar and Grill to sell liquor to be consumed during those events. The application was provided to Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, and Planning Department for review. No questions or concerns were reported. The cost is $50 per day for each of the license plus the $50 publishing fee, and it is a similar request to past years.
Any questions for Kim? All right. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in favor of this request for these liquor licenses? Is anybody here to speak in favor of it? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Doug Johnson with Houston, general manager at Houston Speedway. And this request is the same as last year. It's just mainly for our VIP suite holders. So it's, it's just for certain people that are in our VIP suites at all of our races at Houston Speedway. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Is there anyone here to speak against these liquor licenses? It's one liquor license, I guess, for multiple events. Commissioner Karski.
Is it one license?
Well, yeah, now that I said it, yeah, yeah, I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Thank you for correcting me. All right. Anybody speak against it? All right. Well, then I guess Mr. Johnson doesn't need any rebuttal time. All right.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 13, is a public hearing to consider special event malt beverage and on sale wine retailers license for Sulan Renaissance Association at the WH Lion Fairgrounds on June 3rd and 4th.
We received the application for special event on sale wine retailers license and malt beverage for the Sulan Renaissance Festival. Their festival will be June 3rd and 4th at the WH Lion Fairgrounds, and this will just allow them to sell wine and malt beverages to be consumed on site. Again, the application was reviewed by Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, Planning Department, and no objections or concerns. And again, the cost is $50 per day per license plus the publishing fee.
All right. Any questions for Kim? It's a public hearing. Anyone here that'd like to speak in favor? I thought perhaps you might.
I do present very obviously. When I am dressed like this, I play the character Anne Cook Bacon, who was mother of Francis Bacon. I am a hostess at our Renaissance Festival. We draw people from around the region and around the nation. Our merchants come from all over as do our entertainers. It is not much fun to have a festival without our spring mead and the wondrous ales that are presented, so we would ask that we be allowed to sell them.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone has? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak against spring mead and ale, I think? All right. Thank you. I entertain a motion.
So move. Bennega.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. That takes us to item 14. Kim gets to stay up there. This is a public hearing to consider a retail on off sale wine and cider license for Sioux Falls Campgrounds.
The Auditor's Office has received the annual 2023 retail on and off sale wine and cider license applications from the Sioux Falls Campground. This license would allow for the sale of wine and cider beverages at their establishment located in Minnehaha County. Again, the application was reviewed by Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, and Planning Department. No questions or concerns were reported. The Sioux Falls Campground currently holds a retail on and off sale malt beverage and SD Farm wine license. The fee for a new wine and cider license is $500 plus the $50 publishing fee. The license fee is retained by Minnehaha County, and the county does not have a number of, no limit on the number of wine or cider licenses within the county, and this will be a calendar year renewal going forward.
All right. Any questions for Kim? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this license? Good morning.
Good morning. Bruce Elgert, Yogi Bear Campground. We already have a beer, like you said, a beer and malt and South Dakota wine license, just trying to expand on our offerings.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone here to speak against this license? All right. No further discussion. I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for coming. All right. That takes us to item 15, which is to consider a motion to authorize Minnehaha County as a subrecipient. Oh, this is one we removed, that I didn't remove from my agenda. Thank you so much. All right. Item 16, which is to consider a motion to approve the solid waste permit, number 23-01, for the purpose of renewing the permit for a medical waste treatment facility. Good morning, Kevin.
Yes, I am Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This is a solid place 23, solid waste permit 2301 for Medical Waste Transport, Inc. The location of the property is 25784 Cottonwood Avenue. This is near the Crooks Renner exit in the industrial park there. Medical Waste Transport, Inc. has been located at this site since 2001, and has had several conditional use permit applications on the site and has had several renewals for the solid waste permit. Solid waste permits are required to be renewed every five years. The last renewal for this company was in 2018, so the expiration date for this would be May 7th. The company collects medical infectious waste from healthcare facilities and treats the waste with microwaves and steams to make them inert and not infectious. And then it gets transported to then the municipal landfill from there. The, I will note that since the last renewal, there was a few complaints in the summer of 2021 about smell. Staff visited the site several times and did not perceive any smells coming from the facility, so closed out the complaint. It was addressed in the application packet that the potential for smell odor may even be coming from a neighboring use that has similar medical waste, but also explained that there has been a new exhaust system that was installed in 2022, which may be another reason why the complaints have stopped since then. Attached with this memo is the proposed solid waste permit 2301 with 14 conditions that are carried forward from the last renewal. Action is needed to either approve or deny the solid waste permit 2301 and to authorize publication of the notice of permit issuance in the newspaper. I'm here for any questions. I think the applicant is here, too.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Kevin? All right. I'll give the applicant an opportunity to speak if they'd like to. Not required to, but-
I'm Bob Vanderlinde. I'm the owner of Medical Waste Transport. I'd just like to get our permit renewed. The odor problems were due to a client that was shipping us a lot of biologicals. At the same time, we had some parts problems with our deodorizing on our new machine, but that's all been fixed. So other than that, I just hope to be approved and keep going. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Bob? All right. Any public comment on this item this morning? All right. Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 17, which is the SDSU Extension Minnehaha County 4H Program Update. Nathan, good morning.
Good morning. Nathan Skatson, 4H Youth Program Advisor for Minnehaha County. I'm also joined today by Aubrey Anderson, the other 4H Youth Program Advisor for Minnehaha County. So we're just going to provide a brief update on what we've been working on this spring, and then Aubrey will introduce herself a bit more to you all. So we have a quick PowerPoint here, just a couple slides, so we can move on to the next one here. Just a reminder of what 4H is. It's a partnership between federal, state, and county governments to provide youth programming to the youth of our counties. So we are here to serve the youth of Minnehaha County. One way, we can move on to the next slide, that we are doing that this spring is through our Chicks in the Classroom program. So this is kindergarten through second grade classrooms. We have some in Hartford and Sioux Falls this spring, and we go through the life cycle of chicken eggs. So we bring in incubators and fertilized chicken eggs in one classroom of fertilized duck eggs, and we have the eggs incubate in the classrooms. They hatch in there and then are transferred to a brood box for about a week, sometimes a little shorter if the chickens, if the chicks start jumping out of the brood box. But as we do that, we go once a week to teach the kids about parts of an egg. We have them dissect store bought eggs to look for all the different parts of an egg. We talk about incubation. We candle the eggs one or two times. So that's a photo of an egg that was candled last year, so the kids can see the embryo growing inside the egg. Then we talk about hatching and care of chicks. And so this program's supported by members of the community who donate the fertilized eggs and then take the chicks back, which are two very important steps, because I had a mom stop me leaving the school the other day saying, "These chicks aren't going home with the kids, right?" And I was like, "No, no. We've got it lined up. I wouldn't do that to you." So this is one of our main spring programs. We had to cut back on the classrooms a little bit this year with the onboarding of Aubrey, but next spring, I think we're both excited to expand it to even more school districts and classrooms. So then coming up this summer, we have all of our traditional regular 4H programming, 4H camp, our county horse shows, our youth in action events, which are fashion reviews, special foods, and public presentations. Of course, we have the Sioux Empire Fair. New this year, we are also hosting a regional dog show with Lincoln County 4H. We will be hosting that down in Lenox, but it is a collaboration between both of our county 4H programs. The state has moved away from a statewide dog show and moved to regionals, and so that's an opportunity for 4H members to demonstrate showmanship, obedience, and agility with their dogs. So that'll be an exciting opportunity and a way to promote 4H kind of for the whole Sioux Falls metro area. And then, of course, the South Dakota State Fair. So that's kind of a brief overview of where we're at as far as program and what we're doing right now. Any questions about any of that?
Any questions?
All right. If not, I'll let Aubrey give herself a brief introduction.
Absolutely. Like Nathan said, my name's Aubrey Anderson. I am very excited to be here with 4H. I'm a Sioux Falls native. I grew up in Minnehaha County 4H myself, so coming back to that as an adult, being I grew up in Minnehaha County 4H myself, so coming back to that as an adult, being on this side is very exciting to give back to the youth, give back to my community. Just a little bit about my background. I have a bachelor's degree in elementary education and earned my master's from Augustana here in Sioux Falls in education as well. I've taught elementary school and middle school, both in the public and private sectors, and most recently worked in the field of social work through the state contract to license foster and adoptive families. So my life very much is about serving the community. I love being able to make an impact in the lives of families and kids. So being able to come onboard with 4H is such an exciting opportunity to continue that. The last month has been a lot of onboarding, a lot of learning, but very much looking forward to finding ways to expand our outreach into the wider community as a whole, finding those areas where, identifying and finding those places where we have more opportunity to reach kiddos and youth, and also just continuing to support the programs that we have.
All right. Well, welcome. Any questions for Aubrey? Nobody has really tough questions they want to welcome her with? All right. Is there anybody here for public comment? And 4H? All right. If not, thank you. We'll move on to item 18, which is a briefing on the first quarter 2023 American Rescue Plan expenditures. Susan Beeman, good morning.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. We will be filing our first quarter 2023 report with the U.S. Treasurer related to our last quarter's ARPA spending, and as we have done in the past, we wanted to just provide a briefing to you on what those expenditures were. They totaled just over $951,000 for an accumulated spend so far of just over $18.3 million. As in the past, we've communicated to you that we have about what our balance is remaining. We have just over $19 million left to spend of the award, and at this point, we are still projecting that we will have it fully expended by the end of '25. There were no new projects added. There were all previously reported projects for this last quarter.
Questions for Susan? It's a very detailed report. Very much appreciate you keeping track of all of this. This is not easy, so I appreciate that very much. It's required, but not easy. Commissioner Kipli.
One quick question. Is there any, I'm guessing this is self enclosed to the ARPA terms, but did anything, when the federal government changed or ended the public health emergency, does that change any of the terms of any of this?
The only thing that has changed would be, from what we have been provided thus far, is the, if we wanted to do an additional allotment of premium pay. Premium pay eligibility stops at the end of the public health emergency, so you could still do premium pay from that date backwards for previously worked hours. You just can't do it forward.
Okay. Thank you for.
But that's the only thing that we have been made aware of that would be impacted by the end of the public health emergency.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Susan? So any public comments on this this morning? All right. If not, thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to item 19, which is to consider a motion to approve a resolution to establish certain fees for the completion of open records requests. Leah Anderson, our auditor. Good morning.
Good morning. Yes, Leah Anderson, your county auditor. Before you this morning is a resolution which would update the fees for the county that we would charge for open records. Through what's called the Freedom of Information Act, FOIA, citizens can request public records. The amount of staff time and number of departments involved in fulfilling these requests can vary, and the costs can vary, and usually the cost exceeds the fees that we charge. So the fees are minimal compared to the cost. This resolution also has not been updated in several years. So the main points of the resolution are to increase the hourly fee from $15 to $40 based on kind of an average pay rate of everyone that's involved in that. Sometimes it's attorneys and sometimes it's staff from our office. Also to continue waiving the fee for services that take less than an hour. So if your request is a brief one, there is no charge. And then to request a 50% deposit on services that exceed $100. And the one change that we made that's a little more significant or different is for the Equalization Office. We visited with them and we've established some set fees for commonly requested items, which would be the delinquent tax lists, the assessor roll books, and the payable tax lists, and then also the detailed parcel information reports. These are items that commercial establishments sometimes use and profit from, and they're not necessarily just citizens that are looking for information. So we have a lot of technology that helps process those requests, and we just need to cover the cost of that technology. So I'd also like to take the opportunity, so a couple of years ago, a software was implemented called JustFOIA, and that software, I think they have it pulled up on the screen, this is what the public would see, they can go to this site, to our website, and make a request. And so it's a good way of, for us, of tracking these requests to make sure that we're timely in fulfilling them. So I just want to make sure the public knows that that service is available. So if you have any questions, I will answer those to the best of my ability, and otherwise I look for you to make approval on this resolution.
Any questions for the auditor this morning? Commissioner Kipli.
Madam Chair, thank you. And I see Chris is here, too, so not to put you on the spot, feel free to pass the buck to Chris, but just looking for a clarification on what a distinction between these requests with the Equalization Office would be versus those, I think they're $2 fees, like under the Beacon system. I'm guessing those are less sophisticated, less complicated requests, but Chris, if you could clarify.
Chris Lilla, equalization. Yeah, the standard property record, which you get for $2, you get the information on a house and/or a commercial building. Some of these other fees, like the detailed one, this is CoreLogic, Zillow, those entities that basically want every bit of data on every single parcel that we have, every detail of every parcel. So when we get those requests, those, they basically want our whole Kama system, and those are large, 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 large files, take a lot of time assembling, a lot of time pulling that data. So there's a lot of man hours go into those, and it's not just a, here's your data, then there's a month or two months of follow-up requests. Can you clarify this? Can you clarify that? Oh, we want this. Can you give us the codes for this? It isn't a one and done, send it and we're done. It's usually months and months of back and forth clarifying and giving additional information so they can use it however they want to, but they do profit from that. I mean, they resell all of our data, so we've never had any complaints on any of the purchases from them. So.
Thanks for that distinction.
Other questions? Any other questions regarding this? All right. Is there anyone here for public comment on this? Leah, if you don't mind coming forward. You might have said this at the beginning, but it's my understanding, we just haven't looked at these fees in quite a while, and so the purpose of this is just to try to recoup the county's expenses. We're not trying to make money off of this. We're just trying to cover the costs involved, because some of these are very time consuming for folks.
Yes. Yeah, and like I said, the items that take under an hour, there's no charge. For instance, someone might come to our office and want to review campaign finance reports on candidates. They can look at those items. If they want photocopies, we can make photocopies. There are fees associated with that, but they're pretty minimal. That would be like just the copy charge. We do not charge anyone for something that's minimal such as that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. If not, I consider a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on that. All right. That takes you to item 20, which is to consider a motion to approve an update to the purchasing card policy.
Yes. So before you today is an update to our purchasing card policy. Again, this policy had not been updated in quite some time, so the Auditor's Office has reviewed that purchasing card policy and found it to be outdated compared to the current use of our purchasing cards. So with recent changes that provide financial rewards to the county, to the county's general fund, and to optimize efficiency in the workflow of paying bills, we want to encourage the use of purchasing cards. Previously, they were limited to transactions that were $500 or less and did not establish any uniform spending limits. The policy didn't. So we're updating that. We would like to encourage use as long as there's no fees involved in using your purchasing card, and we also wanted to establish a more uniform daily and monthly spending limit, because Renee in our office gets calls quite frequently about like what a person's spending limit is. So instead of her having to look up each person all the time, she would like to set those at specific limits. They are adjustable if a certain department head or department needs a higher spending limit, that can be modified, but we would like to minimize the changes there. So, and a lot of this is just wording updates based on how current use is, and this is a department head policy update. What you're seeing here is this for, is for the department head guidebook. So if you have any questions, I will answer those, and otherwise I look for approval of this policy update.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski.
I'm totally in favor of updating the purchasing card policy. I guess the only thing that comes to mind is, you know, probably putting more substance to the fee part of it. I mean, if you're, if somebody's traveling and they, do they, are they allowed to use a credit card if an employee's traveling for meals?
No.
They have to request.
That has to be submitted through reimbursement. So for instance, I'm going to Pier Today, the card can pay for my hotel, but I pay for my meals and then I submit that for reimbursement.
Okay.
If there's any charges that I need to submit.
I don't think you can go to a restaurant anymore without getting charged a service fee for paying with a credit card. But, yeah, you know, just, because we're kind of leaving it to the discretion of the purchase, person making the purchase, should I pay for the fee or not? And I guess.
I guess so. You'd maybe have to weigh the cost benefit, too. You know, if there's a benefit to having that fee, or some, some places you can only pay by card and they are going to charge you a fee, so you don't have an option on that, but using discretion on that.
Okay.
But, yeah, we can, we could modify that wording.
Yeah, I guess let's keep an eye on it, and I don't, I don't know what those fees amount to. Our treasurer charges a fee for paying with a credit card. I mean, I get that, it's kind of the cost of doing business, but, yeah, we are kind of leaving that decision up to the employee using the card if they should, which way they should go. So just to keep people out of trouble, I prefer to stay away from that type of thing, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Is there anyone here for public comment on this item this morning? All right. There's no further discussion, I'd consider a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. That takes us to item 21, which is to consider a motion to declare 20 wooden drawer units from the museum as surplus and approve donating them to the Pipestone County Historical Society. Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museums. In 1976, a program called The Green Thumb, which was a volunteer program for recent retirees, built 100 of these wooden units for the museum, and they've been used for almost 50 years. They're being cycled out. They're currently out at the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. We're replacing those with newer steel, enamelled steel shelving. And at the moment, we need to get about 20 of them out of the museum, and the Pipestone County Museum has a need for them. One of the reasons it's, I mean, one reason it's before you is I'm proposing that we give, Minnehaha County, give them to Pipestone, and so it does require, I think, a unanimous vote of the commission.
All right. Any questions?
These aren't historical in any nature.
Well, other than, they're about 50 years old now.
I know, but don't make, don't make me feel old.
I like Commissioner Karski's historical. All right. Nobody else wants to talk. Any other questions? Anybody for public comment on this item? All right. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to item 22, which is to consider a motion to declare the Equalization 2007 Dodge Durango, number 1127, as surplus. Good morning.
Chris Lilla, equalization. Yeah, our Durango is kaput. I'm not even sure when we, when we acquired that vehicle. It was a surplus vehicle from the highway shop a number of years ago. We've ran it as long as we could. It actually started dying on us last fall in traffic several times. We've taken it in, it needs ball joints, tie rods, and the dying of the vehicle turns out to be a head gasket possibly needs to be replaced. So it has reached its end of life. It is not cost effective to put any money into this, so we're asking to declare that as surplus, and we will advertise that on Purple Wave online auction and take what we can get for it.
How many miles are on that vehicle, Chris?
Oh, gosh, I don't even know.
Don't even know?
No.
Okay. So it's been through two departments. It's been used pretty hard, and I guess the only question I have, how do we decide on what auction service to use?
Well, we used to, you know, a couple of years ago, they always did the consolidated auction, and when the county went away from doing that, it really has limited our, I sat on one vehicle for almost two years waiting to figure out how we could dispose of that, and now the Purple Wave is what the highway office or highway department uses, works very well, there's no cost to us. They come and take the photos, they do the advertising, they hold the auction, they coordinate with the buyers and sellers for pickup. Once I contact them, we're kind of out of it. It works very, very efficiently in my experience with them, so when I declare an object for surplus, I've been indicated that I have to also declare the method of, of getting rid of that, and so this is the only method I know of right now, short of trading in, which we're not trading in. We wouldn't get anything for it. I think we'll get more through an auction service.
Okay. The state association just started using, I think it's called Jeff Martin Auction Services. Are you aware of? Okay. Might be something to look into, because I know the state association, you know, gets a little bit of an incentive for kind of everybody working the same, on the same program, but the state association and all the counties just encouraging maybe some, looking at that as an option for future and for other departments to think about, so. That's all I got.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here for public comment on this item? All right. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. That takes us to item 23, which is to authorize the Equalization Department to purchase a 2023 Chevy Equinox for $31,953. Chris Lilla.
Yeah, this is to replace the Durango. We do have this in our possession already, just to let the board know. State bid is normally where we would want to go through. The last couple of years, that has been very trying, and our timing of when we've needed vehicles when they die hasn't worked for us. Last year, state bid wouldn't even honor the state bid. If you put in a price, state bid couldn't, because of the pandemic, they couldn't provide those vehicles for the bid price that was there, so they were rejecting all of those. So that really put us in a conundrum. Some of the history, I think we've got five or six of these Equinoxes now. They've been very good, very economical vehicles. Again, replacing a Durango with bad gas mileage now for an Equinox that gets very good. They're very economical, one of the lowest end vehicles on the market that we can get. The first couple that we bought were 21,000. And then when we had one that a vehicle needed replaced for safety issues and things like that, I put in for 23,000 and it was 25,000. The cost had gone up. Then I budgeted 25,000. And last year, it was 28,000 for a basic model. This year, this price here, when I got the quote on this, I didn't, we weren't shopping for a trim package or anything. I called the lowest bidder in the past and said, what do you have for an Equinox on your lot? They had one. I said, give me a quote and send me the spec so I can get bids from others like that. So when we got the bid price of 31,953, it actually, we went it through another dealer, which was Mitchell this time, they were the lowest bidder. So it did turn out to be a premier, premier package. We were not shopping for that. Last year's was a base model at 28,000. This year, we didn't even look at, I just said an Equinox. And 31,9 was the price that seemed in line. I didn't want to pigeonhole us in. I put in for 40 because when I started pricing Equinoxes or looking them up, they were all about 37. I thought 31,9 was a good price. We moved forward with that and we do have that in our possession. So I'm asking for a motion to approve us.
Questions for Chris?
I would say that I did visit with Chris through emails this morning because I'm always working on kind of a tight frame when we have information available to us and before the commission meeting. But honestly, I can't be supportive of this because it is a premier package. We don't get premier packages on county vehicles typically. And I think that we have to hold the line on that because it affects not just Chris's department, but all the departments across the county. And so I didn't realize that Chris had it in his possession and I'm not sure why he does. But regardless, I'm not going to be able to support this this morning.
If I could just, that timing of events is kind of where this, where this drew. We've been sitting without a vehicle since last fall that we've had a need for and we've been shuffling around. Knowing that we had some carryover from our budget was the holdup. You approved that just the last meeting for us to carry some funding over. Because I did not budget for a vehicle, I didn't know the Durango was going to die.
A 2007 vehicle?
Yeah.
That you've been having a lot of trouble with?
We weren't until last fall. So we didn't, we weren't planning on replacing that. And when it died, we've been out. And so when we looked at our budget reserves from last year, the carryover was the hangup. We were waiting for that, for the budget to move through and through the auditor's office to come to you to see if we had authorization to spend the money. And when we got that, now with this weather change, I've got to have my appraisers out in the field. So it was kind of a, you approve the money, let's find a vehicle. And I can tell you, there wasn't a lot of them out there available. Even the dealer, like I said, he had one. The other place had three and they were all, all the same model. And I said, give me the cheapest one you got as a comparison. And, and that's where we were at. So we did move on it and purchased that. So we do have that, so.
Commissioner Karski.
Chris did call me last week about this vehicle. He said he followed all the requirements on the bidding and the vehicles there. They don't, they have basically a staff person sitting around without the ability to do their job because they don't have a vehicle. And he asked me for permission to pick it up. And based on the fact that he could met all the requirements as far as the bid goes to do that, I couldn't see any reason why we wouldn't so we can keep our people working. You know, this kind of goes back to the argument that I've been kind of quietly proposing and supporting for some time that we really need a purchasing department so we have consistencies, so we don't get our staff and departments into kind of binds with this type of thing. We don't have a, I mean, we maybe have an unwritten policy that we should have the, the base package or the base trim package or whatever. But we really have no way of, except for now, to say no. And kind of puts us in a bind when it comes to our staff working and our efficiencies.
I would point out that the county does have other vehicles available that could have been used, is my understanding. Could they have used a commission vehicle, for example? Yes. Okay, so it wasn't that they had to sit in their office. Any other questions or comments? All right, any public discussion on this item? Anybody here for public comment? All right, if there's no further discussion, I'd consider a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Karski.
What's the difference between this vehicle and the base package, Chris? I mean, what, what does this have that makes it special or more expensive? And what?
Nearest I can tell, the only thing, this one here from when, and again, we weren't shopping for, for packages. I shopped for an Equinox. This one does have leather seats. That's about all I can tell you.
Heated seats, leather seats, heated seats. It's the highest end.
Didn't look at it. So it's the only thing I've noticed different on it.
Do what's, is there a price difference? Do we know what the difference between this?
I don't. Like I said, we've shopped around or when I first started looking at it, I just put in Equinox to see what they were going for because last year I budgeted 25 and it cost me 28. I ate 3,000 in my budget through other line items. So I wanted to make sure that we had enough. So when I was looking at them and MSRP's on those through different dealerships, they were at 37, 38,000. Again, not searching trim packages, just Equinox. So I asked for 40 to make sure that I wasn't going to eat anything. And I was delightfully surprised to see 31,953. And it seemed like it was in line when I paid 28 last year. And so we moved on it, didn't even discuss or have any inkling of a, of a trim package until we went and picked it up.
Which just shows the importance of doing our due diligence on big ticket items. We do have a motion and a second. Is there other further discussion?
Madam Chair, I will be supportive just with the same caveats you're hearing from some of my other colleagues that we probably do owe more diligence to this in the future and just equity considerations across the departments. I know I'm also into the philosophy of we can be penny wise and pound foolish. I'm not prepared to say no today, but we just need to learn our lessons and, and possibly some more structural change too that Commissioner Karski is alluding to. But definitely, I, I guess my, the hardest pill to swallow is the equity concerns across the other departments that maybe are more conscious of this. But I don't really want to hold it against your team and get them out in the field doing the work that they do. So we'll just keep that in mind for the future, but I'll support today.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, oh, yes, so I'm sorry, Commissioner Benega.
I have a couple of questions. I guess, first of all, how many miles does it have on it? And will a dealer take it back without a surcharge or restock charge?
That I have no idea. Miles on it, we've probably got about 200 miles on it now. I didn't look at the odometer when I came over here. Have no idea. I would need to contact them.
Well, the other conversation I remember having spent a couple of years ago, maybe even before your time, I'm not sure about that. But we talked about the fact that some of the staff use the vehicles for half days, do paperwork for half days and those vehicles are shared. Is this a shared vehicle?
No. Well, I mean, it can be if somebody else's is in for service or something. But right now with the weather, if you came over to my office, I've got every appraiser out. Couple of years ago, they were not doing reviews, they were only doing building permits. There was a luxury there. My employees are now fully employed. They are out reviewing their neighborhoods. Everyone's going to different neighborhoods. They will be working on their building permits later, so.
Without all the facts, I'm not comfortable approving it.
All right, well, we do have a motion and a second. Commissioner Leinberg.
Chris, do we have any documentation of bids for basic packages?
Like I said, I don't. I called for availability and due to the weather and our time to get out and about. And again, I didn't shop for a, a package. I asked for an Equinox. And when I got the specs, I sent that to the other dealers and said, give me your bids. The bids were 31,953, 33,451, and 35,459. So 31 was our lowest. And when I looked at that and considering I bought one last year for 28, it didn't even dawn on me. I was just shopping for an Equinox.
So when you, if I could follow up, when you sent that to the other dealers, was it requesting a quote on a trim?
I just sent the, sent the, the spec sheet and said, here's the specs. Can you give me a bid?
Sure. Did those specs include the package or was it just?
Well, it probably would have if, if the spec package was there. Again, I didn't look at it. Last year's was, was a base Equinox at 28,000. I thought it was just.
I'm not sure that the commission didn't make a mistake last year and allow you to purchase one that had a.
No, I've got the, I've got the sheet. It was just an Equinox. It's a base Equinox last year.
Okay, is that your newest vehicle?
Yeah, this is the newest, this is the most recent one, $28,000. I got it right here. It's an Equinox. It's not a premier, it's not anything.
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean, I think it doesn't have leather seats or heated seats.
Doesn't have any of that stuff. And I didn't look at it last year. I just asked for an Equinox.
Okay. Further discussion? Clearly, our processes could be improved here. So why don't we do a roll call vote?
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
No.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bender.
No. Motion passes three to two. All right, thank you. That takes us to item 25, which is to authorize the sheriff's office to submit an application for the 2024 South Dakota Highway Safety Grant. You're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adams, this is Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office and Patrol.
Sorry, I skipped one. Yep, you're on 24.
I thought I was out of order.
Yep, no, that was my fault. Sorry, if we could do number 24 first, thank you. Sorry to mess you guys up, sorry.
It's fine.
Good morning. Mike Mattson, Joe Warden. I'm here in front of you today requesting authorization for the sheriff's office to submit an application for the fiscal year 2023 SCAP grant. SCAP is State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. We've applied for this grant annually. There's no reporting function with this grant. Typically provides us between 40 and $43,000 for correctional type equipment.
Any questions for the warden?
I would move approval.
Just can I ask if there's public comment quick? Because I'm trying to be much better about doing this. So any public comment on this item? All right, now, I'm ready for it.
I will approve or approve. I will authorize that particular grant application.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Bender, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, now you're up. Sorry about that. Item 25 to authorize the sheriff's office to submit application for the 2024 South Dakota Highway Safety Grant.
Yeah, so we would like to put in for these funds, this is the Highway Safety Grant. This, we've done since at least 2019. There is a lot of reporting functions that are required, but we're able to do them. This funding is essential for our, to supplement our overtime budget for enhanced patrols, saturation patrols and also helps us funding from time to time with equipment that we need, like radars and things that help us do our job.
All right, any questions? Anybody for public comment on this item? Oh, Commissioner Karski.
I imagine this is all budgeted for, right, Captain?
Yeah, yes, yep. We'll submit this grant after it's approved. We do have a soft match that's associated with this grant, but it's well below our overtime budget.
Okay.
Other questions? I didn't see anybody for public comment. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for being here this morning.
Absolutely.
All right, that takes us to item 26, which is to authorize the highway department to purchase 28 vehicle mobile radios, nine portable units, one base station, supporting equipment and software.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. We're the next in line. You've had the sheriff's department and other ambulances and agencies come through because of the required changes in the first responder network. We're requesting permission to purchase 28 mobile vehicle mobile units, nine portable units, one base station, plus the supporting equipment and software so that we can upgrade our radios to match the state radio system.
Questions for Steve? Commissioner Karski.
So this allows your highway operators, if necessary, to talk to the highway patrol, the sheriff's department, metro communications?
We can monitor metro communications. They can call us directly on the radio system.
Okay, excellent.
This was all included in your budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 27, which is to consider a motion to declare various highway department vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorize disposal by online auction or through the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Steve.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. We have some equipment that we've replaced and the equipment that we were using that was replaced. We're looking for permission to sell via auction. With the auction would be Purple Wave Auction. We've done a lot of research on that and we've had really good success with them. The only exception is the 2020 Chevrolet Colorado that was totaled in an accident earlier this year that will be disposed of through the, our, the county's insurance. We will then tow it away. We've already received a check for the Colorado.
Questions for Steve? Anybody for public comment on this item? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to the Department of Human Services Annual Brief. Carrie Benz, save the best for last.
Good morning, Commissioner. Carrie Benz, Human Services. So I'm here today just to kind of share with you a little bit about our budgeting plans for moving forward, but I, for 2024. But I also wanted to be able to just kind of do a little bit of an overview of where we are today and some of the challenges that we face. The four focus points that we really have for now and moving forward, especially moving into 2024, is to focus on systemic solutions to the socio and socioeconomic challenges that we have. Certainly, our office is faced with addressing the needs from poverty to unemployment, malnutrition, education and the economy, all things that really do take a team effort to make impact. And so our team has really been starting to get involved with more boards, more committees, trying to be very adamant about being involved with our community processes. And we really have focused on having partnerships. A great example of that for this past, for the last couple of years now, is our partnership with South Dakota Housing Development Authority. And we've been administering the South Dakota Cares, which all of you have been updated on regularly. We're now sitting at about $5 million that our office has administered to our community. And that's primarily in rental assistance as well as utility assistance. And for our time, we've also been reimbursed about $250,000 for the time that we spent addressing that. So it's been a great exchange, a great partnership and a super opportunity for us to really engage in supporting our community's needs. So for 2024 and moving on with and focusing on the systemic solutions, we really want to focus on the expansion of case management for our justice impacted folks. We've been involved with the Just Home Grant, which all of you have been apprised of as well.[1724.45] That's through the MacArthur Foundation, and it's an opportunity that focuses on expanding housing opportunities and services for those that have been impacted by the criminal justice system. Our second focus really for 2024 is accessibility. We have had the pleasure of experiencing construction for the last nearly seven months, and our front desk is looking amazing. On our front desk, we've had the addition of kiosks to our front space. And that goal is really to help people, as you know Medicaid has been approved for expansion in our state. And so our hope is that we can utilize that to help people apply for Medicaid. We can use those computers to help people apply for employment. Housing opportunities, you name it, it's going to be accessible. And so for our clients, it just offers that opportunity to be very well-connected and to do so digitally if they don't have that opportunity at home. Our second focus is data sharing and the impact that that has on community development. We've been involved with a number of systems, primarily the Coordinated Entry System, or CES, to our state. That really is how they work with and identify individuals who are homeless and get them connected to services. And we've been working diligently, both at the state and the local level, to try to join together a lot of the data systems that are out there. We seem to like lists, and we create many lists, but we need to really have a uniform approach in performing and doing our job in supporting our community. So, we've worked well with the state and the local entities to try to be very data-driven and try to establish some real-time data. A prime example, if you have a minute, to go on Bishop Bedley Hospitality's website. We have been able to move forward and have gotten them connected so that they actually do have real-time data. If you scroll all the way down to the bottom of their webpage, they actually have, in the evening, you can see how many people are checking in. So there is that real-time data. So, it's helpful to a lot of people, it's helpful to the other shelters, and also helpful to my office, who does the on-call after hours. So if placement is needed, where, who they contact. So, it's very helpful and something that I think we're really in need of as a community. We also have initiated contact for our office for a researcher and analyst to be able to look at, do an inventory of what we have for reports to best tell our story, to be able to demonstrate our service efficacy. So for 2024, we obviously will continue our collaboration to optimize data exchange. We certainly will continue to work with the Helpline Center at the local level. And our goal is to have HS be able to participate in that HCMC, that Network of Care. Our community is very dependent upon the county as far as having information and being that resource hub for them. So, the more that we can do to promote that, the better off we are as a community, not just as HS. And then also, we want to increase our mobility and accessibility. Our goal is to actually be out in the community more. We have a couple of laptops now, so we're mobile and we're on the move. So, we're hopeful that we can be more mobile and have better accessibility for everybody. We really do want to try to work on also developing a measure to try to follow up with people who initially apply for moving into a unit within our community. Much of that is because we often find that people are incredibly unstable when they move into an apartment. So our hope is that we can do a better job of follow-up with that group in hopes of maybe promoting stability and keeping them housed for longer periods of time. Our third focal point is our staffing and organizational wellness. Obviously, I think you've probably heard repeatedly over the course of many presentations that retention is a challenge. We certainly have had our fair share of challenges at Safe Home with our variable hour and overnight staff. Maintaining that group, to be able to have staff 24/7 at that facility is tough. But we've done a lot of outreach and a lot of impressive connections have been made with not only the colleges, but also to the new programs, the community health workers, the CHWs. That's a new program at the Vocational School, and so we're hopeful by making some of those connections, we can attract some new vibrant people that are ready to go to work for us, so. And then as far as organizational wellness, we actually engaged in some professional training for this whole year. We have a plan that goes throughout the year. That professional-level training has been outstanding, and we appreciate the commission's support on that. It has been an opportunity to really bring our staff up to speed and be at the professional-level training that they need to have to be able to grow, expand their skill sets, and be able to better address the needs of our community. So moving into 2024, obviously, as the community grows and evolves, we need to align our staff to best address those needs. Over the course of my time as director, we've really done a lot of adjustments and made our staff incredibly fluid. So, one department can, or one program can float to the next program and be able to cover when we have absences, which is delightful. Our staff have been incredibly great about helping us cover night shifts, for example, at Safe Home when we've been short-staffed. And so, it's been a pleasure to see those programs really embrace one another and get to know one another, because otherwise they can be siloed as well. And then also in regards to that, as our staff expansion, our space expansion, we really do have to start looking ahead. As our community grows, so does our need for services and space. And so we'll start looking at what that shell space that's in the back side of our building, what that should start looking like, and especially really try to look at opportunities to maybe even be a site that we could do like satellite space for other offices so that it does make their services more accessible. I think one of our growing concerns is that the state is going to be moving their offices out to the east side of town. And so bus accessibility is a real challenge for our folks. Getting out to social security is really a struggle for our folks, even they can go out to the bus stop that's out by, right off of Forty-Ninth Street, but then they have to walk about two and a half to three miles. So, it's not accessible. And so, we just think that if we can create a space that would offer potential as a satellite, they could actually maybe even have an office a day or two with us so that it's accessible for people that are probably more limited in transportation and the ability to get there. And then lastly, our advance for housing and shelter opportunities. Our current navigator position has really, in the last couple of years, offered us a great deal of insight into where we need additional support in our community as far as services go. There is a tremendous number of individuals who are incredibly challenged to find appropriate housing in our community, whether that be because of mental health, whether that be because of physical challenges, behavioral challenges. It's been really an eye-opener to be able to see just how challenged often those individuals are. And so, our goal is to really, for 2024, expand our intentions of how do we best connect them to more landlords? How do we get better connected to vendors in our community that we can work with, that can help support these individuals?
Carrie?
Yeah?
Is that the position that is shared with the city?
No.
Okay.
Nope, that's just fully funded by us.
Okay. What's, what position is shared with the city?
That's a combination one. That is the housing coordinator. And that position actually, I believe, was just advertised by the city, I believe. That one was vacated by the last individual, started on being on leave, and then actually resigned their position there. And so, they're looking to refill that position.
So that position just, we haven't been funding it since it's been open?
We have not. We haven't been, nope. Nope, but we hope to reignite that. We have plans. We have plans for them. And then I will just close with some of the unpredictable complexities that we'll be facing, that you'll probably notice in the 2024 budget. Obviously, with Medicaid expansion, that will impact our hospital budget, our medical needs there. We're just not sure what that's going to look like. We certainly do have 2019 through, it will be June of this year, to really finish according to the old regulations of what we are responsible for. But going forward with Medicaid expansion, we're anticipating that we will have a significant drop in the need for county to be at the plate for that. It also impacts our involvement and our need to be involved with a catastrophic fund. And so that might actually be something that we can no longer participate in. And so we're actually working with the state's attorney's office to kind of look at what that might entail and with the potential of no longer participating. Also then, you probably will see us having some discussion about financial assistance guidelines with the housing challenges that those that we work with have faced. They not only face the lack of units, but it is the cost of those units. Right now, we function off of a hundred percent of federal poverty. We're going to be looking at needing to do some significant jumps in regards to trying to help people not only get into units, but be able to salvage them to prevent homelessness. So, we're trying to put together a few options for you all to explore and discuss. I think we're looking at probably trying to go at least where food stamps are. Food stamps is about a hundred and fifty percent. So we're about fifty percent behind them. And so, we're just finding that so many people that come to our office, we're just not able to have much impact or as much as we should to be able to maintain housing. So, we'll be in pursuit of that. Then, our growing community and the complexity of needs and challenges. Our services have really expanded to not only those that were statutorily obligated, but we obviously have supportive services which deal with homeless families, which deal with criminal justice-impacted, and obviously then our members at Safe Home. And the complexities that we're facing now have just grown exponentially. We have individuals who are really challenged with drug addiction, alcohol addiction, mental health challenges, financial challenges. So, we're going to need to learn how to be, to really morph along with that and to really be able to look at how do we best invest our staff time and align our efforts so that we can best address those needs. And then again, as I just closed with earlier, the development of additional HS space. Our shell space is open, it's ready for completion. We just really need to focus on how do we best utilize that space that we can not only support the county, but we can also support our community in regards to having services available. So with that, I'll take questions if you have them.
Questions for Carrie? Commissioner Karski.
Carrie, concern of mine that I've had for a while is the, it's great that we've been getting the South Dakota Cares money. Historically, what have we budgeted for that type of assistance? I mean, it's been seven figures, hasn't it?
We've usually, in the last couple of years, we've been sitting at right around that eight-hundred to nine-hundred thousand.
Okay.
So significantly less than five million.
Yes, and so we haven't been spending that seven or eight-hundred thousand because we're getting that assistance. How long do you anticipate that Cares funding to be coming our way?
We can participate up until 2026, through 2026. I don't know that we'll probably need to participate that long. The requests for that have gone down significantly. Mainly because there is a cap. You can receive assistance for South Dakota Cares for eighteen months. And that's capped. So once you've received that assistance for eighteen months, you're done. You can no longer access that. I will say a couple of things about that. South Dakota Cares has served a purpose and certainly has prevented a number of people from losing their apartment, becoming homeless and being incredibly challenged. We see a number of people that wouldn't even remotely qualify for county assistance just because their regulations and their standards are very different in regards to who qualifies for assistance. So, when we talk about providing five million dollars' worth of assistance, that's for a portion of people that normally wouldn't even come through our doors to receive county assistance. That said, I think that South Dakota Cares fully support the opportunity for people to access that when they really are challenged and they have. Some of the issues that they've had placed in front of them, whether it be job loss, sometimes they've had medical challenges, they've had surgeries and things which result in not being able to work. But we also want to be very diligent about educating our community to not become dependent on that money and not make that a part of their budget. So that, well, if I can get eighteen months of assistance, I'll do that for eighteen months and I don't, I don't need to work for eighteen months. That's not how that works. And so, although it's available, really, our role has been, and been very purposeful with the state, to promote a lot of education in regards to being self-reliant, being employed, and how do we best help people continue to do that.
So, in reality, the amount going out is diminishing because those eighteen months are running out on the people, a good number of the people.
Yes.
So it's not like we're going to have a large dependent population that's like, where's my money anymore?
A few have had reality checks lately, for sure. A few have achieved that eighteen-month length of period of assistance, and so they're now having to really realign efforts, and so are we. We certainly will help them as much as we can to find housing and to get relocated if they need to do that. But it really all along has been for us, the song that we've sang to the state, is that it's great to have it, but it's also great to be focused on employment and having self-reliance as well.
Thank you.
Other questions for Carrie? Commissioner Kipley.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Carrie, can you just describe a little bit of what you foresee the county's relationship as the city moves forward with some of their initiatives around coming out of the Homeless Task Force? And I think they just had these street outreach teams. Is there going to be any interface with the county or foreseeable budget items going into next year to complement those programs?
Sure. I was on the Homeless Task Force, so participated in those conversations, which has been great. And I would say that our relationship with the city is really outstanding. Our office has really connected with the city on a number of levels. Our other housing division, we spend a lot of time having conversations about what does development look like, what does our community needs look like? When it comes to the Homeless Outreach Task Force, I have met with Councilor McCurus and had numerous conversations about what that should look like, what that needs to look like. So, I invite myself to a lot of things. And so, I'm often at least in those conversations. And so, I don't know that I see anything budgetarily impacting us. Do I see us participating in those efforts and being a partner in that? Yes.
Other questions? Commissioner Karski.
Kind of a question and a comment. Carrie, how big is your staff?
We have twenty-five, about twenty-five full-time, and then the part-time or the variable hour number varies anywhere between ten to twelve.
What kind of budget do you manage?
We're sitting at about, for HS alone, Safe Home is separate, so Safe Home sits at about that million-dollar mark. And for HS, we're sitting at about that four-million mark.
Okay. And I've just asked that for kind of, you know, for the public's information. Your department works with so many different areas, different people, different programs. Monday, was it? No. When we're, Carrie and I met with the mayor and Alicia Calora, it must have been last week, I guess. Thursday. And, you know, we were kind of going over, you know, the contract for the link and, you know, just the where we, where we succeeding, where do we need to focus our efforts? And, you know, the number of staff that Carrie has that work with the people at the link, that work with Safe Home, that work with just so much of our population on a weekly basis. I don't think most of the county residents are aware of the services that are provided there. So just to thank you and appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much. We do a lot with what you give us, so we do our best.
Any other questions for Carrie? Anybody for public comment on this item? All right. Thank you so much. And in my own personal opinion, we really did save the best for last, so.
Good morning, Carol Muller, Commission Office. I, as I was finding the material for today, and I'm reading this, by the way, without my glasses, so if I'm incorrect, you'll have to let me know. I just don't think the public's aware of the fact that you had three-hundred-and-eighty-five pages to review to prep for today's commission meeting. And I don't think that's a very untypical number for you to go through and have. But I know you spent, many of you spent your weekend reading all of these pages that are out there. In the fall of 2020, the commission authorized, approved, a financial commitment of two-point-one-five million dollars to the new metro, the new PSAP, PSAP, being built as part of the public safety building up on Sixtieth Street North for the city of Sioux Falls, because Metro 911 is a joint project between the city and the county. So you've had that financial commitment of the two-point-one-five million. Since then, a change that has occurred is that we're no longer paying that cash out. Instead, we are going to do a swap or an exchange with the city of Sioux Falls. The city of Sioux Falls, we're going to turn over the building that we usually know as CC. we usually know as CCC, which is on West Russell Avenue, 1900 West Russell Avenue, the Community Correction Center, had a fire a few years ago, and it's been sitting empty since then, and the 908 Northwest Avenue, which is, we formerly did, worked with a nonprofit here in Sioux Falls and did shelter care, and they used it for other programs that are out there. Both of those buildings have been empty for several years. So before you today is the authorization for us to exchange those buildings, for the city's making that payment of $2.15 million.
Questions for Carol? I'm always amazed when we get to agenda items like this, and they all seem so short and sweet. And this has been a very long time coming. And I really want to thank the Commission Office, Carol, and Tyler, who've done a lot of work on this, and the state's attorney's office that has done a lot of work on this, and the city. I think it is a great win-win for all the taxpayers. And, you know, hopefully we'll get these two properties back into productive use for folks. So is there anybody for public comment here on this item? All right, I'll turn it over to the commission.
I'd make a motion to approve. Second that.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bynberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. So now it's our opportunity for just general public comment. Anybody here for something they'd like to talk about that's not on the agenda? Good morning. Still morning. Yes, it is, still morning.
My name is Tyler, Maha County. Two things. Does this work at all right now, or how can I get this to work, if that possible? As we're prepping that, I just want to show a couple of differences in the liquor license process between a special one-day event in the county versus the city, so we can kind of understand that once it pulls up here. So as we just heard, you know, Rock, the Houston Speedway had 14-day, 14-one-day special events. I talked to him outside. The city of Sioux Falls allows a liquor license holder. See if it comes up here or not yet. How do I get this to work? I'll be quick here. This is the city of Sioux Falls, application for a special one-day permit for a liquor license holder. Cost is the same, but you look in the highlighted part, license may not exceed 15 consecutive days. Alcohol must be purchased from a wholesaler. If you look at the county one-day special permit, you look here, license may not exceed five days. So the length and time is different, five versus 15. And also, the biggest difference is the city of Sioux Falls allows an unlimited number of special one-day permits. The county has a limited number of 15. So for example, on the Houston Speedway one, as they get more events and such, they'll be limited and have to have multiple liquor license holders. So there's a restriction that I just want to talk about at some point that maybe we can consider to make the licenses the same, so there's no restrictions on those license holders. So I want to make sure that I'm aware of that. My next fold is the short-term rental. Obviously, I've been here a couple times on that, so I want to go over a couple of things there. The city of Sioux Falls, again, has enacted, if you go to this particular website, it talks about short-term rentals, it talks about Airbnbs, VRBOs, the cost is free for them. There's no cost at all. You fill a housing permit, a housing process through there, there's no cost at all for that. So the city has made this very clear on what their intentions are, you know, who needs this, short-term rentals, who needs register. If you look at the second one down, who does not need registers rentals, households that rent a single room. Again, the county is much different in this, as a new thing got enacted. Again, it costs nothing, they're free of charge. But yeah, just two things to kind of consider as far as county differences versus city differences. I think that's something in the future that we'll want to discuss. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here this morning for public comment? All right. No more public comment, then I'll move to commission liaison reports. Any commission liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Benega?
I have a couple. Commissioner Bynberg and I met with the Public Advocates Office last week and talked a little bit about budget and our numbers of service, and we continued conversation with that. This morning, I met with Treasurer's Office, and we also talked about the budget, obviously, and their needs. We also, I also was involved in a last meeting, I hope, for the Sioux Empire Fair Association's task force, and they'll put together a summary that we should be getting in the next couple of weeks, in the near future. And then also, we're working with the state's attorney's office with the Sioux Empire Fair contract extension. So all of those will happen, hopefully, within the near future.
All right, thank you. Other commission liaison reports? Commissioner Kipli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just letting my colleagues know that Steve Groan and I met out at the Highway Department with a couple of staff members from our congressional delegation, Representative Johnson's office and Senator Round's office, just to give them a view of our new facility out there, and just to talk through some projects at kind of a high level that we might be applying for federal grant dollars in the future. But more just kind of building that relationship and knowing who our points of contact in our federal offices would be as we look for letters of support and future grant funding. So that's all I've got.
Commissioner Karski?
Yes. Yesterday morning, at 9:30, met at the link with Brian Noem, the governor's husband. She is interested in the link, and she couldn't actually physically get here for a tour. So she asked Ryan to come down and tour, because there's interest in the mission of what we have going on there. So spent about a half hour answering questions and going through the link. Very informative. I think for all of us, every time I go through there, I learn something new. We have a new director, Kat Torres, doing a good job. Again, last week, Carrie and I met with the mayor and his staff, and kind of going over, you know, the successes and challenges of the last two years. Our contract is due to be renewed the end of June for the link. So we'll be working on that process here within the next hour or so. I'll be driving to Pier for board meetings for the state association. We have a couple of days' worth of meetings out in Pier. So yeah, always something going on.
All right. Any other reports? I would just, you know, nobody wants to talk about equalization hearings last week. We had several fun-filled days of equalization hearings last week. And because of that, we didn't have our actual meeting last week, so then it's always two weeks that you're trying to think of what your liaison reports are. I would note that on the Wednesday after our last commission meeting, a group of us went down to Omaha and toured a couple of juvenile facilities down there as we continue to work through the process of planning for the new Juvenile Justice Center here in town. I thought they were, you know, you always learn something as you go through new facilities. They weren't all exactly like ours, but there were things to learn. And I know that the staff at JDC felt like they made some very good contacts of people that they can continue to reach out to. And we have another meeting today as we continue to work through the planning part of that. And I would say just that it's good to get to know folks out at JDC. There's a lot of people with really big hearts that do really hard work out there. And, you know, a lot of us just hope our kids never end out there and never want to know anything about it. And so I think we are fortunate to have such great staff. And I would also note that we've had several meetings now where we are working on, we need to renew our contract with USD as it relates to services provided under various grants that we have, and some juvenile responsibilities as well that have been there for quite some time, since Serska left and went to USD. And so we will be, we continue to work on that, and we will be bringing something forward on that, also in the not-too-distant future. So anyway, that's the end of my reports. If there aren't any other reports, I'll move to non-action commission discussion. Any non-action commission discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess for about 10 minutes.
So move?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. We'll reconvene in about 10 minutes for executive session.